Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, April 19th, 2016 Board of Education meeting. We've been in executive session since 6:30 PM, or excuse me, since 5:30 PM discussing personnel matters. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do we have any participation in government students here this evening? Yes, a few of you, okay. Your requirement is to stay till nine o'clock. If the meeting goes till nine, we'll take a break at nine. You'll need to come up and there'll be sign-out sheets up here, and if you have a form that needs to be signed by one of the board members, we'll be able to do that for you at that time. If we get done before nine, just come up at the end of the meeting then. Introductions.
Diane Stever.
Joanne Cunningham.
Lynn Lenhart.
Dave Hurst.
Jody Monroe.
Matt Downey.
Charmaine Wijasinger.
Michael Cooper.
Christine Beck.
And Judy Keough.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the April 5th, 2016 Regular Board Meeting.
To move.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstention that item carries? Next item is the Student Senate Report. Do we have a representative this evening? Maybe doing some sport activity, okay. If they happen to come in, we'll go back to that item. Next is the Interim Superintendents' Report. Jody?
Thank you, Mr. Downey. I have a few items to report on. I first wanted to alert, talk to you about what some things the Green Team is doing. So, starting this week, we have a little, starting this week, all schools will be recycling food waste as part of our new recycling centers, which are shown there. In addition, all schools will now be using metal flatware to reduce plastic. The lab school students visited the buildings this week to talk to the students about the initiatives and why this is important for us to do. I'd like to thank the Green Team for their continued efforts, and a special thank you to Mark Warfer, Jen Gagne, and Greg Nolte for their leadership in this area. Concludes by don't be a litter bug. So, it was a great.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
We used to use real silverware years ago, and it ended, a lot of it ended up in the trash. How are we going to monitor that?
That was part of the presentation and some of the training we're doing with students. So hopefully, we'll be much better at that now. So, we'll be composting all of our food, which is really, we're probably one of the only districts in the area doing that, so it's exciting. I also wanted to let everyone know that we have a tentative agreement with the BCTA for their contract that still needs, it still needs final approval of their membership, and then ultimately, the Board of Education. Based on this, tonight you'll see some adjusted baseline budget numbers to reflect some of the savings, which again, will be presented shortly. As part of our ongoing efforts to keep students safe, yesterday, the high school conducted a check of, a check of the high school with assistance from the Bethlehem Police Department and the Albany County Sheriff's Office K-9 units. The K-9 units were part of a mandated lockdown drill the school conducted as part of its emergency management plans. Random hallways and lockers were checked by the K-9 units as the school began a drill at about 9:00 AM. No illegal substances were detected in the school during the process, which took about 15 minutes to complete. The use of patrol dogs was not the result of any specific information suggesting the presence of any illegal items on campus, but instead, is a precautionary measure and a valuable training exercise for school district personnel, law enforcement, and the K-9 officers. And next, the next two items are actually some recognition of some of our students, some of our art students, and I believe Ms. Melanie Painter is here, and then we have some recognition of our student athletes for the winter sports season. So Melanie, if you want to come on up.
I'll just give ahead here. All right, thank you. We have two regional exhibits where students were selected. We had over 100 applicants for each one of these shows, so it's a great honor to be included in them. The opening for this one is actually tomorrow evening at Fulton Montgomery Community College, and we have five students, so they'll get their certificates tomorrow night at the opening. We have Jessica Austin, Lee Chen Zhao, Jackson Layler, Erin Baumgrass, and Emma Yanowski. So I'd like to have them come up now, please.
We have eagle pens, however, we're not also making sure.
Can I make sure?
Yeah. Could I get you back here? Would that be okay?
Okay. Do you want to grab that? I'm gonna grab the other one.
Okay.
And we also have students that were involved in the 17th Annual High School Juryed Regional Exhibit, and this one opened last Friday evening, so I do have awards for those students. We have Emily Bowden, and Emily also received the Mayor's Award for her, for her artwork, and receives a year-long membership to the Albany Center Galleries. We also have Natalie Cilia, Morgan LeBarre, Anna Moore, Marissa Sisson, Haley Smith, and Emma Whalen. So I'd like to welcome them up as well.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and our special guests of honor, our incredible student athletes that we are going to pay some special recognition to this evening. Before we start, about the individual honors, I am thrilled to mention that we had six of our winter teams earn New York State Public High School Athletic Association honors. They achieved the distinction of Scholar-Athlete Teams. That means those teams achieved a 90 overall average, so round of applause for our ice hockey, boys track and field, indoor girls track and field, gymnastics, girls basketball, and boys swim and dive. Being great student athletes is what it's all about, so great job. I would first like to honor our girls indoor track and field athletes who accomplished incredible things. Teddy DiMaria is, I know she's not available to join us this evening, but Teddy is the Section 2 pole vaulting champion, is a state qualifier, and this Thursday, will be signing her National Letter of Intent to continue her collegiate career at the University of Virginia. So, great job by Teddy. I'd like to call up Samantha Gifford. Samantha qualified for the States this year in triple jump, as well as Julia Nugent, who qualified for States in the high hurdles. Congratulations, girl. And now for our boys indoor track and field team. They had an incredibly successful winter, and some of them, I believe they're done qualifying. They just finished a meet at home here for Shenandoah and Shaker, but I do see most of the guys here. I'd like to call up Haney Ahmed. Haney is part of the 4x400 Section 2 Championship Winning Team. Come on up. Nate Brands. Nate was also a member of that 4x400 Section Team, as well as a state qualifier in the 300 meter, came in 16th in the state. Lucas Cully. Lucas is part of the 4x800 Section 2 Championship Winning Team, and was a state qualifier in the 1000 meter, came in seventh place. Chris David. Chris is part of the 4x800 Section 2 Championship Winning Team. Malik Diamande. Malik is part of the 4x400 Section 2 Championship Winning Team, and is, was also a state qualifier in the 600 meter. Dawson Homer. Dawson is a state qualifier and came in fifth place in States this year in the 1600 meter. Jack Huber. Jack is a member of the 4x800 Section 2 Winning Team, as is Justice Jones, a member of our 4x400 Section 2 Championship Team. And Alex Python, member of the 4x800 Section 2 Championship Team. Great job, guys. And now for our state qualifiers, for our boys varsity swim and dive team coached by, by Coach Durgisits. Our first person is Chris Redman. Chris qualified for States this year in diving. Rich Sweeney, a state qualifier in the 200 medley relay. Connor Doyle. Connor qualified for the state championships in the 200 medley relay, as well as the 200 individually relay. Brendan Cartwright. Brendan is a state qualifier in the 200 medley relay, the 50 free, and the 100 free. Great season for Brendan. And Alex Tabor. Alex, a qualified in the 200 medley relay, the 100 meter backstroke, as well as the 200 freestyle. And the final athlete we'd like to honor this evening capped an incredibly successful career just a couple months ago. Jenna Giacconi. Come on up, Jenna. Jenna will be attending, as we, many of us know, the University of Dayton next year. She was the eighth female player in B.C. basketball history to eclipse the 1,000-point mark. You may know her sister Gabby, who did that last season. Jenna was also a McDonald's All-American nominee, as well as a Gatorade Miss New York Girls Basketball Player of the Year nominee. So just capping off an incredible career, we wish Jenna all the best of luck next year
So congratulations to all of our students. You just really, it's superb. Every week, we get to recognize so many outstanding young men and women, so thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Monroe. I understand that a representative from the Student Senate has shown up. Great.
I was waiting to make sure I had all my.
That's good.
It's okay.
You can take the microphone out, I think, too.
All right. Well, just last week, the Student Senate went to the Capitol, and that was a really great experience for all of the senators. We got to meet with Neil Breslin, we got to meet some other people of the state governments. Well, that was really great, and we went there actually to plan out our suburban council leadership conference for next year, just because that's a really big 200-person event with, where we get the student governments from all the different schools, and we hold the leadership conference that rotates every year, so we have been lucky enough to be able to hold it in the Capitol. So, we went there with the goal of looking at the space and figuring out what we could utilize best to make that a great conference for everyone. In terms of what we're working on in the school, well, everyone's getting ramped up for APs right now, so there's nothing much going on, but we do, we are getting ready for our Mr. Bethlehem. I don't know if you guys know about that, but that's the male beauty pageant, kind of just a, a fun thing that we're looking to see if a portion of our proceeds will go to a charity of some sort. That's yet to be determined. We also have our dodge, dodgeball tournament that is usually held in June, so we just have some planning to do with those two things, but yeah, that's pretty much it.
Great. Anyone have any questions? I actually do have. On the leadership conferences, is that a one-day, multi-day? Do?
Yeah, that's just a one-day thing, usually on morning, and the, all the students will take a bus there, and it's, it's just during the school day, so.
All right, thank you.
I have a quick question. When does elections for officers for next year take, officers and then representatives take place for next, next year's senators and?
Right, that usually takes place at the end of the year, usually in June. We haven't talked about that just yet, so I'm assuming that's not that close, but yeah, that's usually right at the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Thank you very much. Next would be the Board of Education report. I would like to mention, Ms. Monroe mentioned about the, the lockdown process that the school went through, and the drill, and the use of the dogs and whatnot. The Board was fully aware of that happening ahead of time. The administration in the high school had sent out a letter to parents in the community to let them know that it was happening. We fully support that. It's a mechanism for, by which the administration could be insured that we are a drug-free zone, and, and we need to make sure we're vigilant in those aspects, and I know we've got some letters concerning about it, and some other letters supporting it, so I just wanted to publicly say that, that the Board supports that process and had, was aware of that. Anyone?
Last Thursday, I had the pleasure of attending the media festival that was held here at the high school, and I was here for most of the morning. I saw the keynote speakers, and then the film festival, which was, as usual, great. Unfortunately, I couldn't stick around for the electronic music or the award ceremony, but I wanted to thank Melanie Painter and her staff for putting this together every year, and it's great to see all the kids coming together from various schools and supporting each other in their creative endeavors.
Yeah, I think there were 10, 10 different schools there, and the movies were really interesting. But I, I thought like the first keynote speaker, who was from the Albany Visitors Bureau, was very helpful, giving suggestions of how students could get involved at the next level of film production. I thought she was very good.
Yes, Christine.
Well, Mr. Norman's here, so I just wanted to thank him for the great concert series we had over the last couple weeks. I got to attend the eighth grade concert, which was always spectacular, and they just went to NISMA today, and the eighth graders got the gold for orchestra, which was exciting news that Aiden was happy to share with me. And we're just very lucky to have such a great music staff here.
I attended one of the high school concerts, again, fantastic music, and also, I came into the building today, and I heard a lot of choral music, and I believe we were hosting NISMA, NISMA Choral Festival here today.
We are.
Yeah, so.
Through Thursday, and we're in the middle of a whole bunch of different concert cycles and NISMA cycles and so forth. Thank you for your kind words. What we do, and we enjoy it.
It was lovely. I have a couple more things. I did attend the day-long Lady Eagles Track Meet. It was fantastic. As far as I know, I know there's some representative from the girls track team here. I think it was the greatest, largest number of teams and athletes participating in the, how many-year history of the event?
11 years.
11 years. And it was a great day for it, great participation. And lastly, I did attend the Chamber of Commerce Dinner, kind of representing the Board of Education. It was a lovely event. I'd never been before, and just again, shows a great collaboration between the school district, the town government, and business owners, so it was, if you haven't attended, I encourage you to do so in the future.
All right. Anyone else?
I did want to add one extra thing. Just, NISMA sent out this research report on gender-specific learning. I don't know if anybody read it. It came online. It was one of the online things.
Came out yesterday. I haven't read it myself yet. We don't.
It was a very interesting article, and I hope that we, we do look at gender-specific learning and make sure that we incorporate different types of learning models for each of the, the different genders, so. It was, it was very interesting. I encourage everybody to read it.
And the person who actually did the report is a Bethlehem graduate that works for NISMA.
Oh, I didn't know that.
She went to Harvard. She's a very bright girl. But it's good.
And also, just to remind the Board, I believe a notice has already come out, the Capital Area School Board's next meeting is, I think it's a Thursday, May 19th. It will be at Gilderlin High School. It's the annual meeting where we present a service award. Each school district can nominate a student to receive a service award. I believe that it's a $100 award, and there's also a scholarship that's available, one scholarship for all the area schools, and one person is selected. I do know that Bethlehem has already submitted their nomination, so I want to thank the Guidance Department for recommending someone for the service award. And at that meeting, the President of Hudson Valley will be speaking. He had spoken a few years back, and each recipient will be receiving a tuition waiver to take a course at the college, so we want to thank Hudson Valley for doing that also. Anyone else? Okay. Next is record, or the presentations at this time. We'll do a budget presentation. And tonight is the night where we, as a Board, have to adopt the budget legally tonight is the, or today is the last day to legally adopt it. We also, it's our annual BOSI's meeting today, where we'll be voting on candidates for the BOSI's Board of Education. That will be discussed later on in the meeting, but, and then we'll have the required public hearing sometime in May, but.
Yes. Early May. Good evening, everybody. It's been many months and weeks of budget development, and tonight is in fact, the night to do our final adoption. As we had noted at the last meeting, we were very pleased with our full GEA restoration, finally, of close to $1.4 million. We were able to increase our baseline state aid up by about $1.6 million, and that, in fact, when you look at our original baseline number, with that degree of restoration, provided something we haven't seen, I think, ever, a slight surplus in our budget going forward of about $336,000. So that has really put us in a very favorable position as we are set to adopt the budget this evening. We have, over the many weeks, covered all of the different program areas, and each department or division presented what they had requested for program additions, and we have those all prioritized tonight for final review and decision-making as to what you would like to see added into the program in this coming year. And then, once we have those decisions, we'll be able to actually adopt and then approve the property tax report card and finish our submissions. The tax cap world that we're in requires us to calculate what the maximum allowable tax levy is, what we affectionately call the Mattel, and this year's formula is a 1.34% increase in the levy, which is the ceiling that you can go to and still need only a simple majority on Election Day in order to approve that budget. It's helpful to put it into context, though, if you know what we're looking at in terms of the tax rate impact to residents. If we adopted at the 1.34%, and with the current assessments, we would be looking at a tax rate of about $21.13 per thousand, so the maximum increase that people would see on a $250,000 home is just under $70. I've been reaching out to both the towns of Bethlehem and New Scotland. They're working very diligently to make all of the changes and additions to their rules, so this number is changing almost weekly at this point, but as of today's date, based on the assessed values that are in place, that tax rate impact, because of that growth in the assessments, would yield a rate increase of only 0.62% if we were to go at the maximum allowable levy. So where we get 1.34 in the levy increase, the community would feel 0.62 in terms of a rate increase for them. So that just puts it into context as we go through and review. You'll see as we get further on, based on recommendations, that rate actually drops significantly below that 0.62 level even.
Just for clarification, so what you're saying is, with the anticipated increase in assessed values in, in New Scotland and Bethlehem, it would be something less than the 6 point, $69 increase?
Yeah. At the last meeting, you had asked for additional information on one of our third-tier recommended additions, which was where we had requested the addition of five additional bus routes at the elementary level. And we had talked about some of the behavioral impacts that the drivers were experiencing, and then in turn, that went to the building principals to be dealing with these behavioral concerns. We have almost a dozen buses split between the five different schools, where there are approximately 60 students on each of those runs. So they're in their seats, three to a seat, so when they have their backpacks and their lunch pails and everything, it gets very close, and when they're in one another's space, we tend to have more of these behavioral issues. So the proposal to add the five additional routes would allow us to decrease the capacities or the ridership on those selected routes, and what it would do is drop the number of students on a bus down to somewhere in the 40-ish range. It'll vary by individual route, depending on where the routes are going and how many kids are in a particular neighborhood, but it would provide significant relief in terms of the three to a seat. It would essentially drop them down to two to a seat. These particular runs that are at full capacity right now are not particularly lengthy runs. They're running anywhere from about 30 minutes in total to 45 minutes in total. And based on these capacity reductions, it really would only reduce the total ride time, like five or 10 minutes. So it's really not a time saver for the individual students. What it does is just makes it a much more comfortable ride with fewer children onboard.
I have a question. What's the capacity of the buses?
We fit about 60 for the elementary school children who are smaller. 66 is the official total, 66.
So how many rows of seats are there on a, on a regular bus?
66 passenger bus will have 11 rows.
Okay, got it.
In each.
Two on two. And six, I got it. Thank you.
And then 72 passengers will have 12.
Got it, thank you.
Okay. So, that's what the intent of the proposal is. If you fund that particular item, it will reduce the number of children on the bus.
I have one more question on that. One of the public speakers from last meeting was talking about the route up to Clarksville being about an hour or so. What, what I'm hearing you say is that this proposal, where these runs would be, would not address the, the time of a run up to Clarksville?
Unfortunately, not. For tho, there are two runs that are right around an hour long if everybody is on the bus, but the students, the one bus has close to 20 children on it, and the other bus has, I think, around 30, low 30s. So it's not a capacity issue. The reason that there's such a longer ride time is because it's a farther distance that the bus is traveling. That coupled with the stops for the children who are onboard, so that would not be changed with this proposal. It's really more so a function of the distance.
So, and I would imagine out there, you're going to have more stops because they're not going to be consolidated like you do in a.
Correct.
A neighborhood.
And that adds time to the route as well. Yes.
And full-size buses are on those two runs?
If it's, if it's required for a full-size bus to be out there, then yes, it would. So, the next few slides give the total reductions and additions for the program, and this, we've covered at multiple meetings over the last few weeks, so I won't go through each of the individual line items. Other than, on this slide, I did want to highlight, as Ms. Monroe had noted, with the potential ratification of our BCTA agreement, we were able to finally project out those salaries and then identify how much breakage we could pull from the budget, given that we have a significant number of retirements anticipated this year, and we are able to pull out another $553,000 from those baseline budget totals. So that added to the 0.8 FTE for the middle school, and then the removal of the International Baccalaureate Program brings the total proposed reductions to just under $710,000. So, the decision will be, are you okay with us putting that through on the baseline? And one of our decisions for this evening.
Do you want us to do that now, or?
Do you want to go through this, and then Judy can go through the next tiers, and then she could pull up the spreadsheet?
Okay. Well, I guess you're, you're asking, are we comfortable with the modification of the reduction of expenditures?
Yes.
I am.
Okay.
We always like expend, deductions.
I thought, I thought, I wasn't really a. I thought, I wasn't really expecting a no, but I had to ask.
That's a no-brainer. Not these reductions. Last couple of years, we didn't like those reductions.
This is the list of our priority additions, and these are things that we know that we're going to need. Did I go too far? Sorry. I'm still learning to use my right hand again. So our priority additions are basically to add some staffing based on needs in our special education program. We have some BOSI's programming increases, again, to benefit some special needs students. We have recommended increases in our subrates for both non-instructional and instructional staff, and then some improvements in the supervisory structure to get some more teaching time on the ELA, math, science, social studies, and PE. And then noon aid to increase those coverage. Those increases are about 641,000, and again, it's our recommendation that those be accepted as part of an addition for next year.
Remind me, because I know we've gone over this in the past, but the noon hour aids, it's not the number of aids, it's just the extended the time that they're there?
Correct.
For all buildings, all the buildings?
At the elementary level, yes.
Yes, thank you.
All five.
Can I ask one question? Can you go through, again, the increase in BOSI's programming? So tell, talk, say more about that.
That was actually for additional students that are going to BOSI's programs. If you recall from the special ed presentation, there was a reduction in private placements, but there was an increase in BOSI's special ed placement, so that's what that's reflecting.
Okay. So this is not necessarily increasing programming with respect to offering new options and so forth? It's just?
Right.
So none of it is CTE?
No.
No.
And I guess I have a question for Ms. Johnson on the high school addition. Obviously, it's very clear on the intensive skill program, we're adding it to the high school. It's a need. But I was just looking at the sectioning and staffing, and I just had a quick question on it. Like, last year, there was 158 requests, and this year, there were 80, or projected 87, so almost half. But the sections are more, so I'm guessing that they're requesting different classes. So it could be more than last year, even if half the amount was requested. Does that make sense?
Good, good.
And the microphone?
Special ed.
Mike?
So, a lot of our programming isn't finalized until we get through annual reviews.
Right.
So students, an annual review happens for each student, and they happen April, May to the beginning of June. The committee will make a determination about a placement for a student. So when that happens, then our numbers get finalized.
Okay.
So Christine, I think what, that, is that this chart you're referring to? They don't make, students don't actually make selections?
Oh, it's not like a regular student making a section request?
No.
It's done through the IEP process. So I think that list you're looking at, if that's, if it's the one spreadsheet, it's as of April 14.
They said there's a certain meeting date.
So the CSEs that have not happened yet, even though we're accounting for them, are in those numbers.
Because, I was just looking at the class size, it went, so with adding the additional teacher, it was going to two, the ratio was two to 10 versus four to nine. So I was just trying to get an understanding of that, and then.
See, and again, in special education, comparing it with other areas, it's, you really can't do it, because there's ratios for classes. So some of our special ed classes can't have more than 12 students in it. In a resource room, there can't be more than five. So there's, there, you know, it's, it's not the same as comparing it to four other classes that could have a capacity of 25 or 28.
And I just had one other question. So I don't remember when it was, five years ago, we cut 20 aids, around 20 aids or a little more.
We proposed to, it was on the tiered list of reductions, so there was, I think, 10 in one tier, 10 in the second tier, and 10 in the third tier, and I think we ultimately cut 10, right?
No, at one point, 20.
The very first year, we cut 20.
20, so we cut 20 then.
So I just want to make sure, so are we looking to go towards like a lower ratio? Because I'm assuming then, we were running right at the requirements.
So, so what was happening then is that, I'll give one example, there were many, because our aids are utilized for K through 12. But if we had, let's say, seven students in third grade at one of our elementary schools, we might put those students in three different classrooms. They're access aids, so it means that the aid can work with up to five students, and we would have them in three different classrooms. That would require three adults, okay? When things got much, much tighter, we went to full capacity on everything. So take that same example, we would take those seven students and divide them four and three, and utilize two aids instead of the three.
Okay.
That's what we did K-12 five years ago, and cut back on those amount of people. So if you ask, I mean, I know there's a few of our principals here, like Mr. Klugman, we'll look at scheduling together. People are at full capacity now, so they might be working, you know, period one with one group of students, and then run down two floors, you know, to work with another group, but we're maximizing everybody.
Okay, great.
We also, we cut that number, but we also couldn't do it, and we added staffing back in.
And I asked, just because, once we added, you know, we have to continue to cover it, and obviously, I want to make sure that we're adequately staffed, number one, and if we're not running at the right levels, then we should add.
But remember, every, every year, I mean, it's not a constant with this, because every year, students' needs change when they come back to annual review. So sometimes, a student could have a one-on-one aid, they've made improvements, we'll move to an access aid. We look at seniors who are graduating, or we look at students who are leaving programs. So it's, it's a work in progress, always.
So is it possible that you get to the end of the review period, and you may not need an additional aid, and then you just add that back in?
Like, for example, the middle school teacher that's on the last tier, we put an aid attached with that. We don't know if we'll actually need that, but for budgeting purposes, it's better to plan for it than have to add it after the fact. But we have, I think, right now, at least one aid position that it's approved by the board that's not filled, because the student left and we didn't need it. So if it's not needed, we don't fill it. Similar to last year, when we added ENL, the board approved a 0.6 addition. When we looked at our numbers this fall, we actually only needed a 0.2 to fill that position, so that's all that's been filled to date. You know, with, you're projecting with special ed or ENL, you kind of have to do that.
You never know who's going to move in during the summer.
Right. You don't want to be wrong.
All right, thank you.
You know, I can just, I know, like, when we went through all those budget cuts, and it was really hard, and you guys did a wonderful job, like, containing that and doing what we needed to do, but when you're maxed out, especially in that special ed department, then you have a high burnout rate, you know, and people are just exhausted, and that is certainly not good for the kids either, so.
And also, if, say they had three students in a classroom, they would be able to possibly help with the other non-special ed students?
Absolutely, yeah. If it, if it's an access aid, they, they work to the capacity, yes, they make sure, and they include students with, you know, they might be in a group with three other kids that are, are not.
So there may be an overfull benefit to regular ed students?
Correct. The only time that that's not the case is if it's a one-on-one, and it's very specific, and it's usually for health and safety reasons.
Plus, I was going to say, as far as I remember, that historical reduction wasn't made because we had excess aids. We had like three or four million dollars to cut out of the budget. So I'm just saying, it wasn't something you would say, oh, I have all these extra staff. The district told departments, cut wherever you can, even if it means potentially adjustments to the program.
Correct.
And now, what I'm hearing you say is, we have some money to recoup some of what we had before.
Well, some of, some of the requests that have been made by my department are two new programs. So the aids that we've asked for, for those are, you know, we can't pull somebody from an existing program when we're creating a new.
Right, well, the high school program is definitely.
The high school, but also the, on tier two, there is a skills class at the elementary level. That's a new additional program, and I've requested two aids to go with that.
I have a quick question, just, and I might have not been at that meeting, but with more people, children coming out of the private schools going to BOSI's, I mean, obviously, the private schools are a lot more expensive, plus they're not aidable. Is that correct?
So we still get aids? We get high-cost aids?
For the private, okay. But that number's reflected on that, because there should be a, okay.
And it's, and there's different cost structures. Sometimes the privates are less than BOSI's.
Anyone else? All right.
Thank you.
So.
How do you want us to proceed? Do you want us to take a vote on, okay, district-wide, everybody's okay with the first tier or whatever?
If you want to do it as we're moving through it, that's great, then we'll be building it as we go.
Any items on number one?
I'm fine with this.
We're all okay with number one, okay.
But are we going to get the percentages for the Mattel on the next one?
Yes. And that's coming as we get to our third tier, the last priority of additions.
We can, if we have an Excel file, we can show.
Yeah, I'll bring that up in just a moment. Our second-tier additions are those that we are also recommending, that they be approved, and that's just under $465,000. And that, again, we can cover within the resources that we have, and these will fill needs for the district. Do you have any questions on any of these individual items?
I just want to see the Excel.
I can't hear her.
Do you want to go to the Excel, and I can come?
Okay.
It would be helpful, although, I know you've discussed this before, the specific need for the RTI administrator, also in light of the additional time given to, I don't know if it's on this tier or not, the supervisors.
That's the first tier.
That's the first tier. So we did that.
Right, so the supervisors, basically, that release for the 0.2, for them to be more available for elementary, was primarily to fulfill APPR requirements for observations, but also to help more with the curricular areas down at the elementary level. So that would be that piece of it. The RTI technology really is an instructional technology position, and the RTI piece would be the coordination of the RTI program in the elementary buildings to make sure we have consistency between the five, between the five buildings, and that we're implementing the RTI plan similarly. The instructional tech support would be more of a coaching model, where that person would be able to provide professional development to the K-5 staff, as well as to go into classes and help with technology while they're teaching a lesson, if they want to try something new, or they're, they need some additional support for technology within the classroom, similar to what we had a couple of years ago, when we had a teacher do a sabbatical in that particular area. It was very well received. Someone to be really a go-to person that can help in the classroom. So it would be a combined position.
And again, just again, for clarification, the RTI students aren't special ed students, so they're not going through that process of an evaluation. It's more of teacher recommendations, and then they're getting the additional help.
Right. The RTI structure is set up in a tiered approach, tier one, two, and three, and the goal of RTI is actually to prevent referrals to special education, so, in that you provide more direct intervention to students at a young age, and hopefully, they can catch up. So students don't typically get referred to special ed until they've been through those three levels.
So I have another question, again, on that position. What coordination, if any, is currently happening between the RTI folks? And then, the other question is, what tech support, if any, is currently being delivered in K through 5?
So the RTI piece is really, it's piecemealed right now. A couple of our principals, thankfully, have stepped up to try and help coordinate it. But in regards, there's, there's a whole process for the assessment piece, there's a data team process that is a little bit different, that we try to have similar, so that the students, and if you are at Eagle versus Elsmere versus Hammagrell, you're getting, you can expect the same level of services. So we have a process in place now, but we don't have a real great way to oversee the entire program. You know, this, RTI is relatively new for us, and the intervention teachers were tremendous help this year, but that coordination piece is really critical to make sure the program is running the way it should. The instructional tech support, we currently don't, we have teachers who have stepped up and helped out, you know, basically just to be a resource for their colleagues, but we don't have any instructional tech support currently at any of our levels. So that, that particular position made sense, K-5, just by the nature of elementary, and then that's, that follow-up, the instructional tech support in 6 through 12, would be basically more of a stipend model, which is easier to do at the secondary level. It's not that, it's not, it doesn't work well at an elementary level.
So that would be a single position, and the person would have to have the skills to do both of those things?
Correct. It could be a challenge to find someone.
So the instructional technology at the middle, at the 6 through 12, that would
be a current teacher for, with a stipend?
Right.
Or where would they find that time to do that during the day?
Well, they have more release time during the day than, than elementary, so it would work better at the secondary level, to start with a model like that. And also, we felt that having multiple people, because the buildings are fairly large, would be a better venue, at least as a starting point.
And for the, either for the district-wide, the RTI technical administrator, or the instructional technical support, who would they report through?
The RTI and the tech administrator, obviously, they'd be working closely with the elementary principals, but they would report directly to the assistant superintendent. The instructional tech support would probably be reporting to the principals, but also in conjunction with the assistant superintendent. We did that a little bit this year with continuous improvement with some of the Aspen training, and that seemed to work fairly well. It wasn't ideal, but it worked pretty well.
Thank you. Mike?
I just wanted to express my support for this position, because I think the RTI program is essential in order to catch the students early and try to remediate certain issues, so hopefully, you can avoid special ed placements for those. So even though it's a large sum of money, you're hopefully, down the road, going to be saving even more. And the more we can do to strengthen and, and make the program consistent across the district, I think is a great idea. And we've had at least several conversations where we've expressed concern that there's not enough tech training and tech support in the schools, and so by putting this position in place, we'll have somebody who can work directly with the staff and provide that kind of in-class training. So I just wanted to express my support for this position.
And that dollar amount does include benefits as well.
So would that be like a 50/50 position, or how would that?
Yeah, it would, pretty much, I mean, at certain times of the year, more of the time would need to be allocated to the RTI process, and other times during the year, it could be, there would be more time available for the instructional technology support. Christine?
I agree with Mike, that we've invested a lot of resources in the RTI program, and it just seems like there's a lot of moving parts between the buildings, that you need somebody who's going to coordinate the program and dedicate the appropriate amount of time to it. It might actually make it more efficient and more effective in the long run, that we might be able to utilize the resources more effectively, because if you have principals doing a piece of it, and teachers doing a piece of it, it just makes sense that it's kind of like its own program at this point, and that it would make sense to add that portion to it.
We've also, just in the short time we've had RTI, we've had a significantly less number of speech identification, like 32 less students identified with speech, and we saw, from this year, when we were able to service many more children than we were in the past, we saw a 5% reduction in students needing to continue in RTI, which doesn't sound like a lot, but for the initial onset of it, and being able to just getting to those kids, I think it's really showing that the program is working well.
I still have a question. I can support both positions. Why aren't there two half-time positions, since they seem to be somewhat specialty areas?
You know, because we thought that, one, we would get, with a full-time position, you're more likely to get a more qualified person. We may put that out there as a posting and try and find someone, and we may not be We may put that out there as a posting and try and find someone, and we may not be able to find a person who could do that, in which case we would have to rethink it. But at this point, that seemed like a better approach, to have a combined position.
Does the administrator part of it require someone beyond a teacher, or having additional...
We think it would be best to try and get someone with administrative certification. Wouldn't necessarily have to be, but it would be advantageous to have that certification.
So basically, you're looking for a teacher with that certification who's really good with technology. I mean, I don't, I don't kind of see that it might not, it might be that difficult. I mean, I think there are people out there that...
I would prefer administrator, because then they can do the reviews. I mean, it makes sense if you're gonna... I would be more hesitant if you weren't going to use it for that purpose as well.
Right. That's why we think that's the better direction to go.
Yeah, I just want to say, I also support that strongly. And I think the administrator part of it, it makes perfect sense to me that you've grown this program and now have 15 teachers and could use somebody who is, whose role it is to be at that administrator level, to kind of help keep the program consistent and, you know, add value to it. I mean, I can imagine a lot of sharing would go on, a lot of best practices. You know, I can imagine that that would reap lots of benefits in different ways.
Any other questions on the tier two? Are people, okay, accepting all of those?
Well, I think I heard Diane kind of wants to get to tier three and then decide.
Just where are we at with that? Are we... So why don't I cut to the spreadsheet, and I'll just review how that's set up, and then you can use that as you're evaluating.
Maybe go to the tier three and have a discussion about those items on tier three.
I guess I'm just not, I mean, are we still above budget, or are we going into the Mattel right now?
And you're looking...
Or is anybody opposed to anything on tier two?
Depending on if it's going to raise the...
Yeah, let's see where it's at.
Is it helpful if I move ahead on the slides?
Yes, please. Go ahead.
So this is tier three. So these are the ones that last week we said, where do we want to end up? And we can go back to those for questions. So these are the decisions that we need to make tonight with the expenditures, what the levy ends up being, and then obviously the tax report card. And this is the slide, I think, that's helpful?
Yeah, so this slide takes the tier-three additions only, and it breaks it out between what the tax impact would be and how much those additions would get you. So it basically takes the 93,000 is the first level. If you were to approve down to that level, you would be looking at a .77 tax increase, not counting the offset for that 336,000, which was the state surplus. So again, maximum amount. The second subset of those tier-three additions would get you another 119,000 in program additions and would go to .96 percent. And then if you did all of the tier-three additions with that remaining 240,000, that's where it would bring you to the Mattel of 1.34 percent. On the bottom, it just puts the range of tax impacts for a $250,000 home. Again, that will be lower with that 336 that's applied there. Is that where you're looking for it, Diane?
Well, yeah. So what does tier one and two bring you to?
So then we need the spreadsheet for that. Okay. So on the Excel spreadsheet on the screen to the right, this lists all of the program reductions and all of the additions by tier. So individually, under the column I for cost savings is just the individual amount. And then the running total is cumulatively, what does that get you? So we're starting off with our negative cumulative $710,000 that we can use to fund our program. So we basically can go down on the additions, all the way down to the lab school honors program in tier two, without having to use any increase in the tax levy.
And that would be a 0 percent?
Yeah.
And that's not taking anything out of the fund elements?
Correct. If you then decide you wish to go further down in the tier-two or tier-three additions, these increases that are listed here on the running total are then corresponded with a percent increase on the levy over last year's number. And then in column N, that lists what the impact would be to a homeowner if they had a $250,000 home.
Based on today's assessment?
Based on, yeah.
That would be the maximum, I guess.
Right. So you can continue to go down, and let me scroll back over here just so that you can see what tier we're in here. So if you go all the way down to the bottom of tier two, Judy, what's the... So at the very bottom of tier two would be a .62 percent levy increase, which would be under $33 of an increase for a $250,000 home.
Can you on that screen put the slide that says money for tier, that other chart with the colors on it for a second?
Yep.
Oh, let's see if they match up. So the 118,000 and change.
That's into tier three. Yeah, that's down, because this is just the tier-three additions on here. Okay.
Got it.
Okay. So if you keep going down on those tier-three additions, if you did everything, right on through the very bottom item on the prioritized list, which is the .6 FTE restoration on the assistant transportation supervisor, that would be 848,000, which is the Mattel amount of the levy. And that would be the 1.34 percent increase at $70 for a $250,000 home, max. Again, our recommendation is not, look at those additions, know what you could get if you were doing it with the Mattel. Whatever you decide on, on those additions, we're going to take that Mattel number, and we're going to back off that 336,000. So any decision that you make, the tax levy on this chart is going to be reduced by the 336,000. And in fact, if you go further over on this spreadsheet, if you're reducing the 848 by that 336, it drops you down to 512,000. That effective levy increase is .81 percent. So if you did everything on all tiers of the recommendations, after we back off the 336,000 from the state aid surplus, you're looking at a .81 percent increase in the levy, which at most would be the $42 on an increase for a $250,000 home. I'm seeing furrowed brows. Are you...
Go back to the 330-something. Explain that again. I guess maybe...
When we looked at that gap analysis on prior budget presentations, we started out with the gap, not including anything for increases in state aid, based on a GEA restoration, nor anything for the tax levy increase. Then we got the state aid final totals, and we added that in there. And that actually created a surplus for it. Without considering any of the recommended additions, that was 336,000 to the good, based on the full GEA restoration. So what we're recommending is that that surplus amount from the full restoration of the state aid be used to reduce whatever tax levy you choose to select this evening.
Well, what else could it be used for?
Legally, nothing.
Your revenue estimates have gone up, besides the GEA, they've gone up by 336,000.
Yes.
I guess that's a piece we're kind of missing to reconcile to.
Yes.
Or another way of putting it is, is to fund the additions outside of the tax increase. Okay.
Jody, if you go to the potential, what does the budget look like? That will bring both sides of the expenditures and the revenues together. Keep going, keep going. Right there.
Right here.
Yeah, right there. So the baseline budget that we presented back in February had a gap of $1.28 million. When we got the governor's adopted budget, we added $1.6 million into our revenues. And just applying that then to the gap that we had going into it, that's where that surplus of the $336,000 came from. So if you were to go to the Mattel of 848,000, we'd recommend that you reduce that by this 336,000, which is what drops your levy amount down to $512,000. And that's what is a levy increase of .81 percent. Okay? So if you look under the expenditures column, there's our full reductions, all priority additions, second tier, third tier. If you approved everything tonight, you would be adopting a budget at $96,540,000. So that's where the decision about the tiers comes in. So if you say...
And what percent, the .81 or the 1.34?
No, it's .81, but what is the actual tax increase?
The .81, go back to this spreadsheet, would be at max $42. Again, remember...
No, that's the dollar amount, but what's the percentage was .62. So what's the percentage?
So right now, based on today's assessed values coming from the assessors, if you adopted at .81, the effective tax rate increase that people would be paying is .09.
So it's like...
But the actual money increase is 1.34.
No, no, the actual levy increase...
Forty-two, it says 848, 1.34. What's that 1.34 right there? Right here?
Where are you looking?
This one.
Oh, that's at Mattel. So Mattel says we can raise $848,000 in tax levy. Okay, so that's the most we can do.
And that's the .62 percent that you showed us earlier.
Yes, but that .62 is the rate that residents would feel as opposed to the levy.
That translates to the maximum Mattel.
Yes.
I think maybe if we had seen like the reductions and then additional revenue, and then started the slide, you would, you would end up where you're at with the .81 now, instead of putting it at the end.
But basically, you're telling us we can fund all three tiers and still have a Mattel that's less, below 1 percent. With the effective rate on people, a tenth of a percent.
Right.
It seems like a little bit of like...
We're debating it why? No.
It seems like we would be crazy not to.
And that was my comment at the last meeting, because you're so unaccustomed. We're all unaccustomed. I've never had a budget like this in 20-something years of doing municipal finance. Because of the full restoration of that GEA, it has put us in a very strong position. And I mean, normally, we like to try to levy at the Mattel. And based on this inflow from the state, we have the ability to lower the levy below Mattel.
Christine, I think you...
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I understand that it's low and we could fund everything, but there's a lot of tier, third-tier additions that we would still have to continue to support next year without the GEA. And we also would have to include, you know, raises and costs of benefits. So I would, I would be hesitant to include everything in tier three.
Although, what I would say for clarification purposes, you're getting the GEA, you would get it again next. I mean, your revenue has just gone up to what it should have been. So unless the state does some other mechanism to defund it, you would still get 1.34 million next year that you got this year. And again, all things being equal.
Right, we still have costs of benefits and increases across the board, so...
We haven't seen the three yet, but you're saying we need to look at those threes?
On, on tier three, I'd like, yeah.
Jody, can we just go back to that one slide? We have the tier three.
Yep, right here.
Yes, so why do we have that slide?
So that slide basically is showing you that this 1.34 would be...
If we added more?
No, funding everything, because it's not taking out the 300-plus thousand. So you can't really get...
Instead of doing the 300,000 at the end, maybe we should have done it.
Even though our Mattel is 1.34, with the additional revenue, you can't really get to 1.34. The highest you could get if you accepted all of the additions. And don't forget the additional breakage that we have now as a result of the agreements. That made a huge difference as well. So the maximum you could get at funding everything is .81.
So if we do everything, we go out below 1 percent?
Yes.
Correct.
With a tenth of a percent tax increase.
I just had a question slash comment for Jody and Cindy. On the additional bus runs, I just want to make sure that if we approve those, I mean, it's a large sum of money. It's almost $200,000. If we do this and then we discover it's not solving our behavioral issues on the bus, I just want to make sure that we have the ability or the incentive to revisit this again next year and that we're not going to be locked into this.
So what we could do is, we actually have data. I know the principals keep it for all of the bus referrals, and I think, Cindy, you do as well. So we could certainly track, is there any difference in those referrals or behaviors that we have to deal with as a result of less students on the bus? I mean, that could certainly be a data point we could look at. So, yeah, we could certainly look at that at the end of next year to see if it was worth it.
And I know that's important, but I got to tell you, as a parent of an elementary kid, the buses are really crowded. This is, I mean, going from three kids to a seat to two is, in my mind, I'm just thinking, that is such a huge quality of ride issue for an elementary kid. It is. And I'll tell you the other thing. I know you said five to 10 minutes is not a big deal. That is a five, 10 minutes on a bus ride that's 50 minutes, that's a big deal. Her coming in the door instead of at 3:50, potentially at 3:40. I mean, those are things, for those elementary kids, I hear that endlessly. And it's not just my own child, my sister's kids, I mean, her friends. The bus rides, jamming three kids in a seat, is terrible. And maybe there's no behavior issues on that particular bus, because there just isn't. But there's other things to think about, not just fixing potential behavior issues. You're talking about a quality of ride issue. And I looked at that bus slide with, and I thought, wow, that's really going to make a difference. Those are a lot of bus rides. That's a lot of kids who aren't going to be jammed in, three to a seat. And I'll tell you, in the winter, they've got their snow pants and the boots, or their shoes and the bag. They got the backpack, which is huge. I mean, they have a lot of stuff. And my daughter's a fifth grader, so she's, you know, on the bigger side of it. But, you know, she's still a little kid, and they're still jamming three kids in a seat. I can't stress enough, I think the elementary parents will thank you, thank you, thank you. It's not just fights on the bus and the issue. It's quality of ride. And I think 10 minutes or five minutes to a bus ride, that's, you know, 50 minutes, that's a big deal.
No, I appreciate those comments. And I think if we can do anything to make the rides more pleasurable for the kids, that's great. But if we're in a budget year where we're in a problem, then I just want to make sure that we know that we're... Because transportation, quite honestly, is one of the few areas where we have some discretion.
It's a good point.
And actually, I think that's an easy one, because of the fact that, you know, you're adding bus runs, which you could eliminate and go back to something that, okay, is not, you know, is not going to reduce a teacher or a faculty or, you know, change ratios in a, in a classroom that affects students for an eight-hour day. So, I mean, I think it is something that, you know, if we were facing budget issues, I think it's an easy place to go back to and say, okay, you know, when times were good, you got a little more space in the seat. Times are not so good, so you're on the bus five minutes longer, and there's three kids in your seat.
And that's really hundreds of kids that you're benefiting, because it's the 13 routes now that are jam-packed, plus the five that we're adding. So you get 18 routes of about 40 kids on average. So you're close to 800 children that are going to have a better ride.
That alone, I would be willing to have a 10th of a percent increase. I mean, that's, you know, that alone is worth something.
I do want to make sure.
Mike, Cindy?
Yes, Cindy.
Mike, please, microphone, not mic.
Thank you for the discussion. Just two things. I would, first of all, say that the drivers would really appreciate that, too, because it would be a more enjoyable ride for them. But I, just as a reminder, 195,000 is before you're going to get state aid on that. So next year, you would be seeing a revenue back, so that the total amount comes to somewhere around 70,000.
The only thing I would caution us about, and I support it, if it can help address a behavioral issue and to alleviate the overcrowding, but I want to make sure that we continue with the neighborhood stops and not go slide back down to where we were stopping at every house. Because I, you know, we got to this point because we had to make some tough decisions in a tough time, but we made some good decisions over that process, too.
And I would just add, transportation is one of the areas that... And I would just add, transportation is one of the areas that we get most criticized by for the community who may not know all the complexities. The other thing I'm gonna say is for those kids out in Clarksville, I, I get there's a few of them out there, but reducing a five or ten-minute ride for a kid whose ride is twenty minutes does not, and I don't know how to do it because I don't work in transportation, but that would be something I would ask you to continue to look at. In terms of quality of ride, we had a parent who's saying their kindergarten is on the bus for an hour. So I can't imagine that being a quality ride. So just for you to continue to work on that and come back next year or somehow address the issue of ride time, just because of where you live.
And I could certainly do that, but you have to understand that ride time and distance and, and a number of students on a bus all connect together.
Of course.
So to reduce the ride time out in Clarksville would mean taking a bus with the thirty students on it, cutting it in half, so now we have a route with fifteen and a route fifteen. Another route, less students on a bus, but the time would be saved.
Sure, I know, I totally understand that. But I also totally understand the concern.
Absolutely.
And if we're cutting the ride time for kids who live in town, we have to be mindful of addressing that issue for people who live in more rural areas.
Well, I think I heard we weren't really cutting the ride time too much. It was more of getting three students out of a seat.
Correct, that's what we're looking at right now.
That was the main concern.
And can I also say that the whole idea of behavioral issues, since I'm a big fan of the district partnering with parents, and it's not just on the district to, um, address behavior and appropriate behavior on the bus or in the district property, um, we hopefully can do some work with parents to, uh, encourage kids to behave civilly on the bus.
Diane, recess.
I just have a couple of questions, and Lynn is still here, right? Just with the, um, modified boys and girls track and field. I think there was a little discussion about how that might help with the high school. I mean, our high school team is paying coaches and trying to raise money for assistant coaches, right? Is our high school team...
We, we added, we, we funded, we added that last year, the coaches.
Oh, they don't even pay for an extra one now?
No.
Any other questions right now?
What I will say about those track coaches is I believe that, um, I totally support additional opportunities at the middle school and fitness opportunities and for kids to get a chance to try out a sport in the middle school. So I, I support this program. However, I believe it will create a feeder program, two programs that are already incredibly, have an incredibly high participation rate. So down the road, if these are funded, down the road, I believe the district will have to address the issue of number of coaches or however they want to frame it on, because I believe this program will increase the numbers on track team coming up out of the middle school, which is fine. And I like the program being in the middle school. But down the road, there will have to be some reflection on how high school track is run.
And we, we do have, um, a plan to address coaches, not just for track, but other sports as well. And also, I know Mr. Keys has been working with some of the other suburban schools about addressing it because I believe us and about three other schools are the largest, have the largest participation rates. Other schools don't have those same numbers, so how can we collectively address that issue?
Anyone else? Any questions right now? Anyone have any questions on any of the other tier three then?
Yeah, that's not gonna...
No, I was gonna say, are we ready to, prepared to move, move on and make a motion, you know, adopt tier two and three, or anybody want anything, feel like, don't want funded based on the information we've been provided so far?
I will just say that, um, I know the district took a lot of time reflecting for many weeks and developing these additions. And just because we can't, can't add things doesn't mean we necessarily should. I do support a lot of these, but I do want to make that statement that just because things are proposed, because there is money, quote, to spend as a board, we should be mindful of every penny that is spent.
And, and there were, at this, on, at the start of this process, there were a lot more requested additions than what actually made it here. So we agree that, you know, we, I think having been through significant reductions over the last few years, we're mindful of what we really need, what we think will be beneficial to students and what ultimately in the long run makes sense. Because I don't think any of us really want to be, uh, looking at these tiers and reductions like we were the last few years.
And the fact that you didn't come back this week and say, guess what, we have more money, we can go up to the Mattel, there's actually more we want to add, you know, I think.
Right.
Says a lot about...
Right, I just have another question with the assistant transportation supervisor. Right now, is that a point four position?
It's nothing. It was eliminated several years.
It used to be a full-time position. It used to be full-time, so we're just hiring back as a point six.
Right.
Christine, do you want to, you, are you okay with tier three, or did you want to...
I don't think we should cover all of tier three. I, the only, there was only a couple of things that I thought on tier three that I thought we should add this year, which was the elementary bus runs. And because the art club at the middle school and the high school are already being run, that the, the salary should be, um, it was cut at one point, but they've been covering it for the last however many years, that that should be re, re-added back. But I, I think everything else is just, um, additional perks that we should think about holding off for another time. I mean, to give our taxpayers a break in a year that we, we can. I think we could have done, um, gone a little lower la, last year, and I think we have the opportunity to do it again this year.
The one thing I would say is I want to be clear that we are giving our taxpayers a break. They, we went from a possible Mattel, um, of just over a half a percent to, to a possible Mattel of a tenth of a percent. So, yeah, we are giving them a break in, um, in the possible Mattel that we could put in there. I mean, I'm sort of amazed that you could do all this with only a, a tax increase affecting the taxpayer of a tenth of a percent. That's, that's really, you know, a lot of, I mean, with a ninety-five or whatever our budget is, ninety-six million dollar budget, that's budget dust. I mean, that's, that's a tiny...
That's two cents per thousand.
But next year, it's gonna be ninety-eight, and the year after that is gonna be a hundred, so...
No, I mean, we're not, I don't think we should make assumptions about what the future holds. I think that, um, if you look at, you know, and if you're in the state capital, there's certainly a lot of what we're doing today that is happening with the state budget, with budgets, municipal budgets all over the place. So, I mean, we're not functioning out of, out of the norm of what is happening in state government and municipal government.
Can I say something? Uh, uh, yes.
I know Lynn's been quiet.
What's up with that?
Yeah, you know, it's unusual. I think, you know, if there's anything positive to say about the years we had to do all those cuts, I mean, there isn't a lot of positives, but I think one thing that came out of that is that I think everybody became more conscious of what we were doing and, or what each person was doing as a staff member in the district or even, you know, the board or even the community. And I think we've become more efficient in the process. And, you know, I, I've looked at all these additions and certainly every week we've gone over all, all of these. And, um, I mean, I'm the one who has a history of when we could add things and, and did when we needed them. But I feel, I have more confidence in the process now because I think everybody really does look at things a lot more carefully and what's really important, what we really need to do. And so nothing is being added like willy-nilly. I mean, this is, you know, these are programs that we need and can use. And the only thing I would add, the caveat I would add to it is that we're always evaluating what we're adding and what we're doing so that either maybe next year, well, that wasn't a good idea, so then we don't do it, or this worked out really great and we had these positive results. So I, I guess that's kind of the way I'm, I'm looking at this. So I can go with the whole thing, and to have a possible just point one percent increase in taxes, I think my husband will just collapse if I tell him that.
Not even one point oh nine percent.
Oh, point oh nine, okay. But it just, um, I'm very comfortable with the recommendations that have been given to us.
Again, I, I would add that I'm comfortable, the administration has spent several months now, not just the central administration, but working with each school and, and each department head, and, and coming up with a very balanced and a very solid budget and, you know, determining what were the top priorities. And as Ms. Monroe said, I'm sure there are a lot more adds that went into the discussion of, you know, weekly, uh, daily meetings with both finance and administration and saying, okay, this is where we can go. And, um, you know, your, your, your addition here can't, isn't gonna make the cut even to a tier three this year. So, um, we thank you for all your effort and I do support it, um, in total.
I guess one last question. Um, and, and again, you, I know you've been over this in previous meetings, but I forget. The library support for databases?
Yep, that was, uh...
What did that used to be, Sal?
It used to have a point, um, six, Bosie's, we used to have...
Yeah, come on. I forget what it used to be.
When we had our previous library management system, we contracted with Bosie's for an FTE of point six at the cost of forty-seven odd thousand dollars last year when we incorporated the library automation system into Aspen as part of an upgrade to their product called Destiny. We eliminated all support for it. We got a little too dramatic and librarians don't have anybody to fall back on when they have and need help with the Destiny system. So this puts back a point one, point one FTE through Bosie's. So that, again, would be eligible for reimbursement the following year. So the effective cost is, you know, the net is forty percent of that, but it's desperately needed for support of our library media specialist.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
So we have a few more slides. Do you want us to just finish off?
Yep, and we can make any adjustments to them as we go through.
Okay. So again, the budget decisions that we need to finalize tonight, um, we've already kind of talked about this slide. Certain that we've talked about. And Judy, you can... This is your fund balance update. What I did on this, I changed it slightly from the last time that we had looked at that. I went with what would the next year's budget be if everything was adopted through tier three? So I needed to recalculate the undesignated percent. Basically, it's a twenty thousand dollar shift. So I've lowered the undesignated by twenty thousand and proposed an additional twenty thousand into the capital reserve. So the total is still the same that we're projecting for the end of this year. It's just a reallocation between the unrestricted portion of the fund balance and then the capital reserve. And I put this up here because when you adopt the property tax report card, that's one of the required disclosure elements are what are your pieces of the fund balance. Any questions on that?
I think I do. I, I want you to repeat that part about the, the capital reserve and the undesignated. Does, do these amounts represent the money that had, does that amount represent you've already taken out the money for the capital reserve?
For this year, right? This is a projection for the end of this year, anticipating that we're going to have a surplus and that full amount of the surplus rolls into your fund balance. And then we have to review each of the restricted reserves and then determine what we can fund. And based on that, I increased the capital reserve by twenty thousand and then I reduced the unrestricted by twenty thousand. So your total is the same for your fund balance. The, the projected surplus isn't changing, but because the budget total was slightly lower because of that surplus on the three thirty-six, I needed to lower that. And as we, you know, soon, we'll probably be getting into some discussions about the next bond that we've talked about. Those funds can be used to offset the cost for the bonds for, for taxpayers. So, uh, it's a beneficial, uh, reserve to have.
And do we need to take an affirmative action as a board to make that capital reserve allocation?
Yes, at the end of the year.
So we do that at the...
Okay. Yeah, so that'll be part of the tax rate resolution that you adopt in August because we'll have our final actual numbers for the year and then we'll show you what the fund balances are and then the recommended transfers and then you approve that as part of that resolution.
We could use part of that undesignated fund on the tax rate, could we not?
You could.
Okay, thank you.
Um, also, uh, the bus replacement proposition, which you've already approved, the capital outlay for the high school pool for the improvements, and future meetings. So...
What I would say, uh, May third, we had planned on having, um, a board of, uh, Ed candidates night. We had two people submit petitions. There are two seats open. Mr. Mike Cooper and Jonathan Fishpine have submitted their, uh, necessary and approved petitions. So therefore, we'll cancel the debate night. There's no need to hold that. We only have two candidates for, um, up for election.
So Judy, is there anything else you need at this point? Or do we need to take an action for anything? There is an action on the finance section of the agenda, and all we'll have to do is fill in the number based on what you have approved here. And let me show you as well the property tax report card. It's small print. That's the way it comes off of the state system. But just so you can see what you would be taking action on, would have the, um, row A is the proposed tax or is the proposed, proposed budgeted amount. That's the ninety-six million, five hundred and forty thousand on the top line. And then row B is the tax amount, and that would be at the sixty-three million, nine thirty-two. And that is where it's showing is the point eight one percent increase on the levy. Um, the overall budget to budget increase would be two point five three percent on growth of expenditures. And then on the second page of the form is where we put that fund balance information. So that's where we have the unrestricted fund balance and then the various reserves spelled out. So you'll have to take action to approve the budget amount at the ninety-six million, five forty and then to also approve this property tax report card, which I'll submit into the state tomorrow. Chairman?
Yes, Chairman.
There used to be something, for every five hundred thousand dollars, it reduced something point whatever. Remember, we used to do that? Do you know, for every five hundred thousand dollars, use how, what, what's the reduction on that?
In terms of the levy, and we would show it as each one percent of the levy. So each one percent is like six hundred thousand and change. It's around six hundred and fifteen thousand. So as we were looking at, these are proposed either, you know, additions to the budget and here's how much it would cost you if you wanted to do that. So we mix it up a little bit every year in terms of how we present the information, but, yeah, that's what you're thinking of.
And that's when we're reducing and reducing.
I'm sorry, did I, what?
No, that's when we were kept on reducing.
I can't believe Diane's leaving after.
Anyone else? Any questions?
I don't know what we're doing. I'd like to know if other board members would entertain a discussion on using some of the undesignated fund balance to lower the levy.
What would be the recommendation of the administration, I would ask to that question.
I'm comfortable with going with the point eight one percent levy. Again, I'm always trying to balance the overall fiscal position, the longer-term projections, and then our ratings with the underwriters. I mean, we're gonna be issuing debt again and they love to see the growth in these reserves. They're gonna love the restrained tax rate already. If anything, they tend to, um, weigh it against you if you tend to go with zeros or very low percentages because they feel that you don't have the will to do the necessary revenue raising actions to support your budget. So, I mean, I think with the point eight one, it's a very reasonable increase and I think it well positions us for our longer-term financial forecast as well. I think the, the one thing that we want to be somewhat cautious of is that we did get all our GEA this year and we, we can expect there will be none of that next year. We're not sure how foundation aid will play out. I mean, the state has said they're going to work on foundation aid. They're gonna make changes to it. They, they say that all the time and they've not done anything. But that unknown, I think, is something that, um, you know, we want to be cautious of moving forward.
Right, Jody, I believe, you know, any adjustment to foundation aid isn't necessarily a positive adjustment for a suburban district.
Exactly.
It could be a negative adjustment.
Exactly.
Sometimes be careful what you wish for.
Right, because if they make adjustments, it could go to more higher needs districts.
Wealth indices or some other numbers that would negatively impact us. We could see a reduction in state aid because of the adjustments, so...
Correct.
And plus, I believe they're still using old census data, which is to our benefit at this point, too.
Right.
And we may need the fund balance next year.
We may need the fund balance next year.
Yeah, oh, no, I understand that. Next year and subsequent years.
Okay, thank you.
So within the, um, agenda, there is a portion where we'll be adopting it already. It's already in here, right? Okay, so we can go on with the next item then, right? Okay, at this, the next item on the agenda is recognition of visitors. If there's anyone in the, um, audience who would like to address the board on an agenda item, feel free to step up to the mic. If you could just say your name, Tim, so we're on.
Good evening, I'm Tim Maniche, I'm the president of the Bethlehem Central Athletic Association, so this is my annual opportunity to say how grateful we are on behalf of the hundreds of families who make up our athletic community, along with our coaches, and we couldn't be more pleased with the additions, we couldn't be more pleased with the thoughtful way that each and every one of you, every single week that you're at this, are making decisions about revenues and expenditures. We really are, as somebody who does this, you know, what you're doing professionally, it doesn't always play this well on TV because people don't always play this well in the sandbox. So we're very blessed with the relationship we have with all of you. We're very thankful, and we hope that continues further, for now and forever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I also just say that this is Mr. Maniche's last year as president of the BCAA, and just want to thank him for his service.
Yeah.
Good, next year, he can run for school board.
I already asked him about it. At the chamber dinner, I think.
Anyone else want to address the board on the agenda item? Okay, we can move on to item number eight, finance. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the following finance action items A through C. So moved. That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstention that item carries? Number nine, professional personnel, is recommended that the Board of Education approve.
You skipped the, you skipped the budget. B. You skipped the budget.
Oh, okay.
It says B.
It says B, which I thought I said A through C.
But that was under.
We have to specifically.
So it's a different, they didn't put it, there's not a heading, okay. I guess we'll just call it subject. Subject B, two thousand sixteen, seventeen budget approval. Have a motion for that item?
Some.
First and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions that item carries?
And that blank in the resolution will include the figure that you just approved, ninety-six million, five hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay.
And just to be clear, that includes items D through E on that past resolution request. Okay, now we can move on to professional personnel.
No, we didn't approve the tax, the property tax card.
That's E.
That's E, we just did the D through E on.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you say D.
I clarified that, that that B item actually is items D through E.
Okay.
We should have done a small B, capital B. All right. Professional personnel, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional action items A through I.
So moved. Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstention that item carries? On item number ten, I would request a motion to amend item number ten and delete item A.
So moved.
First and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstention? That motion passes. Now I would ask for a motion to, for number ten, to approve item A. Or I meant, excuse me, item B.
So moved.
First and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstention that item carries? Item number eleven, other action, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items A through D.
So moved.
First and a second. Any discussion?
Just in the, I emailed the board about, were there any major changes to the, I know it's only a first read, but were there major changes to those policies?
I didn't see your email till late today, so I didn't have time to answer it. The social media guidelines is a new policy, and Jody, you'll have to help me on what changes we made on the tutoring.
We just removed that one statement about teachers having to let the principals know they're tutoring outside, so the rest of the policy stayed the same.
So the social media guidelines is a new policy?
Yes.
But don't we have guidelines that students have to sign?
That's the acceptable use policy. This is specific to social media.
Okay, thank you.
And then I would add for item C, is, as I mentioned earlier, it's our vote for candidates for the capital region, Bosie's Board of Education, of which Lynn is a current member. They have an annual dinner, annual meeting, which Mike, myself, and Jody and Lynn attended. We got an opportunity to hear a couple of the candidates speak, and I would support their approval.
And also a discussion of the budget, too, and part of which the administrative budget is what we vote on as a board.
Right, which is why we moved the meeting to Tuesday, today, because by law, we're required to vote on the Bosie's items today. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstention that item carries? Item number twelve, recognition of visitors. If anyone would like to address the board on a non-agenda item? No, not seen anyone, we'll move on. Future meetings? We have a regular, okay, future meeting, we are not going to have the Candidates Night that was on the agenda, as mentioned, and Brittany, could you make sure Mr. Fishpine's notified about that, too? Then our next regular board meeting is May fourth, six p.m. executive session, start time with a public meeting starting at seven p.m. That will be here. Then we have the annual vote on Tuesday, May seventeenth. Polls will be open from seven a.m. to nine p.m. We will have the bus proposition, we'll have the two-seat board seats, our budget, this library, Board of Trustees, I believe there's one up, and then, oh, there's two for the library, two? Two, and then their budget vote are all on the ballot for voting here. I encourage everybody to please come out and vote. I legally can't tell you to support, I can just tell you to vote. We will be getting our newspaper, our newsletter out to the district residents, fully explaining what is, what the budget is comprised of, and the justifications for any additions.
And we'll be using the new digital scanning machines for the first time this year. So I'm just mentioning that because we have a lot of people who are big fans of the old green machine, so just to prepare them, they will not be there this year.
Yeah, they must be. And May fourth is actually the budget, the hearing night for our budget, public hearing on the budget, where people can comment, address us on it. Not quite sure why they do that, that way, because we've already adopted it, but that's the state law, so we'll do, we'll do the necessary public meeting on that, that night. We'll open it and then close it subsequent, all in one meeting, so. And then after the budget vote, the next evening on Wednesday, May eighteenth, is our next, would be our second Board of Education meeting, again, a six p.m. executive session, start time with a seven p.m. public meeting, and that also is here at the high school. Do either of those, when do we start doing the retirees and the tenure?
June, two June.
Okay, so they won't be there, two June meetings, okay. Great. We do not have a need to go back into executive session?
I moved to adjourn.
You were quiet tonight, now you're ready. Anyone, can I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? We are adjourned. Pig students, if you come up, the sign-out sheets are up here, and we can sign, any of the board members can sign your.